Good evening, everyone. This is the November 5th meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Roll call of the members. Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keith.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Nowosowski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo. Here, Counselor Rotendo is absent. Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Counselor President Gino.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 29th, 2018. So moved. Calendar item number three, that the City Council awards certificates of commendation to Guadalupe Panameno, Marisol Alaves Estrada, Jeanne Dumas, Columbia Las Delicias, and Maria's Taqueria for donating clothing, accessories, food, or funding to victims of the Franklin Avenue fire. And at this time, I'm going to welcome Counselor Nowosowski, the ward counselor, to share these.
You can sit down, whoever you want, wherever you are. Well, I know we had part of a session last week of giving out awards and certificates of appreciation for those folks that helped during the October fire on Franklin, at 10 Franklin Ave., and 100 people were affected. And before I go any further, and so I don't forget, just so everybody knows, that Thursday night at the Comfort Inn, there's a fundraiser to help those that are still in trouble. They still need some funding and places to live, and some of them even need some clothing. So let's take one step at a time. If you can make it Thursday night at the Comfort Inn at 6 o'clock till 8, we'd appreciate whatever you can come over and come up with. So, these folks here, we have tacos.
Maria's Taqueria.
What is it?
Maria's Taqueria.
Maria's Taqueria. Now, they came down to the festival on Shirley Ave., and we had some food trucks. And right away, they said, whatever we make tonight, we're giving to the fund. And it was very, very nice of them. Total surprise. We had no clue they were going to do that, it was just a spur of the moment thing, and we thanked them for that. And Guadalupe, these folks behind me, Guadalupe, and Maria, and Jeanne, and Neelix, whoever Neelix is, they came up with clothing. The night of the fire, they all came to the high school. Many of us were at the high school. They came up with food, they came up with clothes, they came up with whatever they could to help make the night easier for those that were in trouble. And what really bothered me, through the whole night, there was this seven-year-old young girl, she was still in her pajamas. She went to school in her pajamas. But we thank those down the Garfield for supplying her with their uniform for the day to help her get through the day and the days following. So we want to thank everybody for their hard work and their thought, and it just shows that, you know, we're all there to help everybody. Everybody here helps someone, somewhere. We got the rec department helping the folks, they were there. The mayor's office, the people from the Revere Community Committee on Shirley Ave., they were all there. Vani, they were all there to help, and we thank them for that. And this is just a small token of our appreciation to thank them. I got a, Dimple didn't want to come up here, but I still have to mention her because she was there that night. She was there that night, and we thank you for that, Dimple. So with that, in no special order, we only have one here for Neelix. Not for Jeanne, just for Neelix. Not really. But this one is certificate of commendation and grateful appreciation of your extremely generous donation of clothing to aid in the displacement of approximately 100 residents due to a five-alarm apartment building fire on Franklin Avenue, which occurred in September 16th, 2018. And in recognition of your continuous generosity to this community, special recognition is hereby accorded to Jeanne Dumas. The certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere on behalf of its citizens this 5th day of November in the year of our Lord, 2018, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 242nd. And it's signed by Ashley Melnick, our city clerk, Jessica Gino, the City Council president, myself, Ira Nowosowski, as the ward two counselor. And next, we have Marisol.
She's not here yet.
Marisol's not here yet. So, Marisol, where did she, she gave men's clothing, baby clothes, accessories, and a bassinet for the folks. So we'll give this to her when she comes over. And Guadalupe Panameno. Right? Good. And basically, Guadalupe gave the clothing to help the kids and some of the parents that night. So we thank her for that. And Maria's Taqueria. And as I said before, they gave their funding of whatever monies they made in the night of the festival on Shirley Ave., so we thank you for that. And last but not least, Columbia Las Delicias. And they gave food for the evening, and I know they worked hard and they sent it all over. I think they sent it over with Dimple, matter of fact. Guadalupe brought it? Okay. So we give this to them, and we thank you for your service in Shirley Ave. and everything you do. So with that, we thank everybody. I don't know if anybody carry you around, okay? So we'll take some pictures, and then we'll call that out for tonight, and we'll move on to the City Council meeting. Thank you.
All right, this time, I'm going to ask for a suspension of rules. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered? And I'd like to take up calendar item 13. Motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor appear before the City Council in executive session for the purpose of discussing the consideration of filing criminal complaints relative to pornographic materials being brought into the youth center by a city employee.
Thank you. So I just want to start by saying that I know the mayor's office is here to address any questions the council may have, as well as the police chief. We did receive a communication from HR, as well as the chief, that there were no findings today. So I'm going to offer it up to the council to ask any questions, but first, I just want to offer it up to the chief or anyone in the mayor's office that's like to make a statement to first inform the council on the situation, and then I'm going to ask any counselors to ask any questions or concerns. Chief?
Good evening, Madam President, City Councilors. Last week, I believe Thursday afternoon, I was contacted by the mayor's office. There was an allegation that some information that was received by Counselor Rizzo, and he forwarded to the Human Resources Department. The Director of Human Resources, Mr. Viarella, did an investigation and interviewed all the employees at the youth center, and he came up with a finding. I guess that did not satisfy Counselor Rizzo, so the mayor instructed me to have the detectives do an investigation. And we interviewed Counselor Rizzo, all the employees at the rec center, the employees at the Consumer Affairs, where they work in the building, the custodian, and a couple of other people. And the allegations appear to be unfounded, and they appear to be what the employees told the Human Resource Director on the first day. So I have a police report, it's not public, but Detective Kara Manica did a great job in a short period of time. And there's no crime, there's no findings. It appears the video was in the box of some donated videos, and no one's disputing that, not even the person who donated the videos. A family member left this one video in the box, and all the videos were disposed of and destroyed. And there's no evidence that anyone watched the video, if the video was on the desk. No one person has been able to corroborate that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. At this time, I'll open it up to the council, Counselor Rizzo, and then I will follow by any other questions the chief's here to answer, as well as the mayor's office for their statement.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Obviously, you get a report like this, you know, you keep hearing, you see something, you say something. And we have to let our workforce know that it's okay for them to do that without fear of any retaliation or any type of intimidation. Let me just say that from the outset. If people do see some wrongdoing going on in departments, they should mention it. And when you hear something as disturbing as inappropriate material over at the rec center, you know, it certainly raised my eyebrows, and I would imagine would raise anybody's eyebrows when they're being told that. The simple fact that this inappropriate material found its way into the rec center is troubling in and of itself. And I think that, you know, we should figure out how it got in there, and why it got in there, and who knew what and when. Because, you know, based on email I received, it says that this had been going on, you know, prior to the director's return, and he found out about it when he got back. You know, the day that I received the phone call, apparently, it was seen where they claimed it was. Now, nobody there wants to talk about it or say anything? That's, you know, that's their prerogative. But, you know, my goal was to make sure that nothing like this happens again, that we can put full confidence in the parents and grandparents, that their children can go to the rec center, can go to the youth center, and use it as they always have for decades and decades, without being worried about seeing any type of inappropriate material. The fact that it was found, and the fact that it was disposed of, that's great. But it is my hope that there will be a policy set. Maybe there's a policy that no videos or DVDs are donated to the rec center anymore. Maybe it's all purchased by the city so that we know what is being brought into that rec center. I'm not sure if that's the policy or not, that we should pursue, but what I do know is that, you know, everyone should feel comfortable when they go there, that inappropriate material is not going to be potentially subjected to their children of all ages. So I will just say that, Madam President. I'm not going to pursue this if the chief feels as though that they've done their due diligence and that they did it, you know, the right way. You know, they can determine that themselves. But, you know, I felt a need as an elected official, as part of this community, for as many years I have been, to make sure that this is brought to the attention of the appropriate authorities. And I hope that the investigation was accurate and true, and that we don't have to have any more of these types of conversations going forward. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Zamburo.
Thank you, Madam President. I understand the concerns of something like this being in the youth center, but what I vehemently disagree with is this should ever be before the City Council and should have never been put on a motion on a calendar. I disagree with my colleague vehemently. I don't like to do that, he's a friend and a colleague, but this is totally inappropriate, should have never been before the council. It became a public issue before it was investigated. At minimum, it was a human resource thing, and at maximum, a police investigation. You got both of them. But you can never take back that the city was thrown under the bus. The city is now a pornographer, or we are allowing pornography in the youth center. And you can't take that back, and I am disgusted with it. And there are certain things that we don't do in public because they cause too much damage, and I think this is one of them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. So we have been working very, very hard in this city, all of us in this body, to rid the reputation of Revere. I say it time, and I say it time, and I say it time again. We work very, very hard, all of us individually, doing whatever we do. And here we are again, and again, and again, on the front page, or some page of the newspaper, about pornographic material in Revere. And a friend of mine said, "Well, it's Revere. It's Revere." Well, you know what? We all work very, very hard. I don't want a reputation in Revere anymore. I want people to come to Revere and love it, and say it's beautiful, and not know the history. I don't want it. And I just want to say, I said it when the parking meters came up, the issue of the parking meters, it has no place in this council. It should be done behind closed doors. We have a human resource department, and we should not, now it's on television, you're ruining someone's reputation. I'm just very saddened by this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. Counselor Morabito?
Thank you. You know, I take any-ish matter like this seriously. Let me start off by saying that. I believe this motion has, does not belong up here right now. I think this could have been circumvented as an agenda item simply by asking questions as a director, as a board of director of the city. I think we could have simply avoided the public humiliation and the, spare the humility of the parks and recs department, simply by asking questions. There's no reason why this should be before the council. You could have simply asked the questions, got the answer, waited for the investigation, and waited for answers.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I feel the same as my previous three speakers and colleagues, but what bothers me the most, that the Boston newspapers were specifically called to report this. No need. This is an in-house item. If it got out of hand and the police found something wrong, then I'm sure there would be indictments and so, it's going to get into the newspapers, we know that. But in this case, it should have been handled in-house. That's why we put an HR department together. The police did a great job with it, they found that there's no cause for alarm, other than that the fact that they did find a video there. But there's a chain of command. The chain of command doesn't come through the City Council. So I would ask that in the future, let's handle it in-house, folks. Please, to all my colleagues, and even to our friends at the school committee, if anything comes up there, handle it in-house. Don't start spreading rumors when half the rumors aren't true. In some cases, in this case, all the rumors weren't true. So I would ask that we keep our city clean. We have a nice city, as Joanne said. We live here, I've lived here for 71 years, and I want to continue here peacefully, without being dragged in the mud. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I share the same sentiments as my colleagues. You know, we have a fellow named Tom O'Brien here tonight from HYM, looking to make a major investment in our city, to bring quality people into our city. Young professionals, family people. And then we see this stuff in the Boston press, we see it before the City Council. This is insanity. This is tearing down the city. The person that directed that email to Counselor Rizzo perhaps should have gone to the mayor's office and let him know about it. That would be the appropriate thing to do. The mayor, the director of recreation, the police chief, there should have been a meeting amongst them to discover whether or not this was credible or not. It's embarrassing. We run a good recreation department down there. Young people with their children are going in there every day. The city's turning around, it's looking better every day. And then we get into situations like this. This is totally wrong, it shouldn't be. And I would suggest to anyone in the public, if something like this comes before you, go to the mayor, go to the police chief, go to the department head, discuss it there, not in the Boston press. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, one is, I appreciate that the police department did a review, and the Human Resource Department did a review, and found there was nothing to really be talked about. But I just wanted to say that I spend probably five days a week dealing with the recreation department, maybe seven days a week sometimes, dealing with the recreation department. I have two kids that utilize the recreation department, and I work very closely with all of the members of the recreation department. And I just want to say that I apologize, and that I have the full confidence in the recreation department and what they do. And I apologize you had to go through this, but it is what it is, and I don't disagree that when we are brought, when a concern is brought to us, that we should bring it to the appropriate attention. So this should not have been ignored. I do agree that it should have been handled maybe differently, but I just want to say that I have the full confidence in the recreation department and the people that work there. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keith. Counselor Powers, followed by Counselor Guanasso. Patch, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to thank the police department for following up on this. This is like the third matter that came before us that I feel had no right being here. First, we had the meter gate, we're all, unfortunately, two people, one I am very friendly with, still waiting on that. That caused, that was the first big scene. We had Boston TV here, we had newspapers. Then we had the water gate, and now we got the rec center. I'm glad that they found out, they investigated, there was some evidence there that deserved an investigation, but that doesn't deserve to be here. We, in the future, I hope they go through the procedure of finding some evidence, some guilt, before they put it out to the public. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. The unfortunate part about it, it is out, we must discuss it, we must tell and alert all our constituents and all our residents that everything's okay, to finally put this particular ugly matter aside. But we had to review it, and it was done in an orderly fashion. The Revere Police did a thorough review of all the findings, and all we as laypeople rely on our police department. So as long as they're satisfied, we're satisfied. And again, the Parks and Recreation is a division within our community that we are all proud of. Every one of our councils up here, the administration, and I'm sure that most of the residents are proud of what goes on at the Parks and Recreation, led by a very able person who does a wonderful job. We have to lift our heads up a bit on this, and once you take the Boston papers out of the way, we know what kind of a community we have here. It's a wonderful community, and it's a people closely bound together. So when we have little issues like this, and this is not little in any, by any means, it's a big thing. I'm proud to say I live here, I'm proud to say I represent folks in Revere, and I think that now, from here on in, the council's on edge now, and we know now what we have to do in these types of matter. And we all collectively ask that a Human Resource Director be put into place. He's here now, and he's doing a great job. Once, and we ask our constituents, if they come to us with a concern like this, there's a couple of avenues we can go to. The first, I think you ought to go to the police department, then you ought to go to the mayor's office, and then the mayor will direct the Human Resource Department to do their investigation. And then, if the need of the City Council comes to be, which I don't have any reason in the world why we should have to, but we should be made aware of any investigations going on in our community, but we shouldn't be the catalyst of it, we shouldn't be the people leading the drive on this. This is where our community should not come to us with these things. We can direct them as to where to go with it, and hopefully get a resolution that's satisfactory to everybody. But again, once it's a police matter, and as was described to me, how it unfolded and how everything took place, I'm quite satisfied with, and if that's the truth. And I can only go by what was told to me as the truth. And so, Madam President, I think precedent has been established. We've had three ugly occurrences of this type of thing. We don't want it in this community anymore, we don't want it before this council. This chamber is the people's business, but it's not the police department. And so that's why we have a police department. But again, to all the residents out there, as you see, if you see something, say something, but please direct it to the right department so we can correct it immediately. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? May I briefly, colleagues? You know, being on the City Council, 90% of our job does not happen in this chambers. It happens every day. It happens during the phone calls we make, it happens during the emails we send, it happens in the interactions that we have in our everyday lives, and that's where our work is done. 10% of our job happens in this chamber on Monday nights. 10% of our job comes across as motions and as the little things that we do. The other 90%, people don't see and hear about. And I think that this is an example of one of those things that should have been a part of the 90%, that, you know what, as a counselor, if you feel that it's your due diligence to look into this, you should. a counselor, if you feel that it's your due diligence to look into this, you should. You should do whatever needs to be done to, you know, fulfill that, but this is not the appropriate venue. This is the 90% that happens outside of this chamber and not on a Monday night. You know, it's our job to build this community up. We have enough people working to tear us down. We don't need to be working against each other and ourselves. We need all the positivity and all of the light shone on Revere to show how wonderful it is. The 90% that we do does not see the light, does not make the headlines, it doesn't get out there. So, that's my opinion and my message as the council president and the president of this body is, let's show people that good percent, and let's not show them the few percent that is not so great. You know, let's work together to really build this community up and show the world what it is, because I'm so proud to be from here. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to offer the mayor's comments, and then any other, you know, questions from the council, and we'll lay this to rest.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. I want to start by assuring our residents that the recreation department is a safe place for everyone to spend their time. The review by both the human resources department and the Revere Police Department have shown that there has been no evidence of any wrongdoing by anyone. We are extremely proud of the programming that our recreation department provides for thousands of our kids and adults throughout our city. And I am extremely grateful to the many people who go out of their way to try and support it in any way that they can. I commend my team for taking swift action in responding to a concern, and remind the council and residents that our first priority is a safe and secure city for all of our residents. At the end of the day, this issue has been nothing more than an exercise to test our systems and response, and I believe our team did an outstanding job. It is, however, unfortunate, extremely unfortunate, that the reputation of our great city was called into question prematurely. And I agree with those city councilors who have voiced their concern about how this got on the council agenda, how this got into the Boston Globe, how this got on W B Z, without verified facts. This type of accusation strips away all of the good work that the recreation department does, and unnecessarily causes parents to hesitate sending their child to the great programming that happens at the Rec Center. It is a knock on our city. We, as elected officials, have to be mindful of the repercussions of our actions. I plan on personally visiting the upcoming Rec programs so that I can let parents know how committed we all are to their child's well-being, and to answer any lingering questions or concerns that they may have. Again, I cannot stress this enough, our recreation department is doing incredible work, making sure that there are safe options for our kids, to keep them engaged and off the streets. And I want to reiterate that our Rec employees took the proper steps after receiving donated materials by identifying and disposing of inappropriate material before disseminating any of it for public consumption. I have every confidence in the world that they will continue to implement their policies and procedures to keep the young people of our great city safe. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this before? No? It's my recommendation that we place this on file. I don't believe that there's any need to vote or discuss it any further. Just be placed on file. This time, we'll return to the regular order of business. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Public hearings, calendar item number four. Hearing called disordered on the application of the McClellan Highway Development Company LLC, which is an affiliate of the H Y M Investment Group LLC, and is the owner of the certain approximately 161-acre site located in Revere and Boston, Massachusetts, seeking a master plan P U D special permit under Title 17, Chapter 17.16, Section 17.26.070 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, respecting a multi-lot mixed-use development proposal on the approximately 52.062 acres of the site, which are located within the Suffolk Downs Overlay District. The subject of the hearing will be the application for a master plan P U D special permit. The relief requested will be the issuance of a master plan P U D special permit under Title 17, Chapter 17.26.070, allowing for the redevelopment in accordance with Chapter 17.26 of a multi-phase mixed-use project with a variety of approved uses, approved maximum heights, approved floor area ratio limitations, approved parking requirements, and approved open space requirements with mitigation to address anticipated impacts of the redevelopment project.
So this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll ask any proponents here. Any proponents?
Is that me? Yeah. I hope--
I am definitely a proponent. We've spent a lot of time. My name is Tom O'Brien, I'm with the H Y M Investment Group. I pared down since we did quite a few slides from last week when we were here with you, plus you've seen our presentation quite a bit. So we pared down a lot of our slides, but if I could just run through a little bit of explanation about the project. I would just say at the outset, if I could, this is a really proud moment for us, for our team, for our company to be standing here with you. We collectively have come so far together on this project. We started meeting with you and spending time with you, if you can believe it, back in the spring of 2017. That's when I began to knock on your doors and start to have coffee and start to seek your advice and seek your thoughts. We did that same work throughout the community with a variety of different leaders within the community. We've done the same thing in East Boston, as you know. We've now, at this point, I think, done about 350 different meetings, community meetings of all types and sorts and things. So we know this project pretty well. But I think really, for the most part, what we're most proud of is that the plan we've put together is a result of this process that we put in with you. And if I could, just say thank you very much to the mayor and to Bob O'Brien and the team. I think the mayor stepped out, I'm sorry, but to the team that structured this process, this particular part of the process for us. There are members, I think, from the Development Advisory Group who are going to testify here tonight. We've been working with that group of people since June of this year. So we started with a process with all of you in the spring of last year, 17, and then in June of this year, the mayor named a Development Advisory Group. This is a group of people who spent their time on a volunteer basis with us. We met frequently during the course of the spring and the summer and into the fall, and all the work that those folks have put into the site has made this project a better project, and we're really proud to be here, as I say, with all of you tonight. We are very proud to be part of this city, very proud to be neighbors of yours, and we intend to do a good job with this site. We intend to be very responsible developers. So quickly, all of the council members have seen this, but just for members of the public, this is the site, it's a very large site, 161 acres. You can see it, for those of you who are in the audience, it's up on these screens that are in the corners or in the back. It's a very large site, but the key for us is, the front door can be those two Blue Line stations at Beaumont and at Suffolk Downs. We're also surrounded by terrific natural assets from Revere Beach all the way over to Belle Island, I'm sorry, Belle Isle Marsh, which is a great spot for us for walking and really being associated with the site. This just gives you a sense of the meetings that we've done. This is really small writing, so hard to see from here, but this is just a sampling of the list of meetings that we've done, you know, since, as I say, the spring of 2017. So our development vision, as you folks know, you could probably repeat this part with me, I think, members of the council, but our development vision is that this can be a mixed-use, walkable site. We want this to be a place where people will both live and work. We want there to be great restaurants, great opportunities for people to walk throughout the site. We've committed that 25% of the site will be devoted to open space, and the open space piece feeds into, again, the overall field of the site. We want it to be a very open and friendly and very public site. We want there to be neighborhood retail, so this is not big-box retail. These are restaurants, these are small shops. If we set the table correctly, if we make it a place where people will live, if we make it a place where there's great retail, then we think we'll get economic development. Amazon, as you may have seen over the course of the weekend, may or may not, who knows, be focused elsewhere. They haven't really confirmed anything specifically. We still have hope, we still are working away, as have all of you on that whole process. But if we don't get Amazon, we'll get somebody else, because we're going to make this a great place for people to live and to shop, and that will lure other companies. And that's the key, is just keep working. It's been the story of all our lives, right? You keep working, you know, piece by piece, and you put it in place, and the good things happen as a result of that. It's a transit-oriented development site, and we're going to create a site that will be resilient to climate change and all the things that we know are happening right now in our world. Here's the open space network, this gives you a sense of what we're thinking about. It's surrounded, it is centered around, I'm sorry, a main central park that will be basically where the infield is for the track today, and then 40 acres of additional open space throughout the site. You can see through these pictures, we want the open space to have a variety of different types of characteristics, some active, some passive, places to read a book, some places to play games and things like that. There will be great civic spaces. So this is an outdoor space associated with a place for music or community gathering that will be right on that central park that I showed you. And we really care deeply about making sure that there are great civic gathering spots, really activated spaces that are programmed well. Our master plan vision is defined in large part by this slide, as you can see. We want the blocks to be small, we want it to be very pedestrian-friendly, we want people to be able to bike all over the place, we want this to be a really active place. This gives you a sense of the road network, so remember that in the end, there are no roads really on the site that match up with what our aspirations are for the site. There's no water sewer, there's none of those sorts of things, so it's our job to build all that. So we're going to build all the onsite roadwork, all the water sewer, all those pieces. It's probably $200 to $250 million of onsite work that we're going to spend on all those pieces, all the open space, all those things are things that we're going to build. In addition to that, we'll talk about this in a second, but we've also pledged $50 million of off-site mitigation for roads and other pieces off-site to make those improvements to make sure that we manage the transportation and the traffic well. This gives you a sense of the bike network. This is a very extensive bike network, I think about seven miles of bicycle paths throughout the entire site, all of those associated with that road network that I described for you. The mix of uses, so this is the Revere portion of the master plan, and so remember that the division of the site is about 40% of the site is in Revere, about 60% is in Boston, and this gives you a sense of, again, what that program is. The base program, remember, and we've been working with you on this, again, since the spring of 2017, and this base program was outlined in the zoning that we completed with you last winter in January, I think it was, of 2018 of this year. But that zoning is that 50% of the site must be devoted to commercial uses, meaning office, laboratory uses, or hotel and retail. We can do up to 50% of residential, but we can do no more than that. We can do more commercial, but certainly can do no more residential across the site. So this program reflects that as you go through the land uses. We've also talked about Beaumont Square and our desire to make Beaumont Square something that is complementary to the other portions of the existing Beaumont Square, and really create a vibrancy that really adds something to the community. This gives you a sense of that drawing, so in this drawing, we've included our Innovation Center, which we, again, will build in Phase One. So this is an office building that we'll build in Phase One to make a great place for entrepreneurs to gather. This gives you a view of that Innovation Center as you look back toward Beaumont Station, so you're standing in the middle of the site, looking back toward Beaumont Station across the Innovation Center on the left. So what are the community benefits? I'm going to ask Doug to help me look at this, because my eyes are so bad, so Doug might remind me. I'm going to lean forward real quick. So the total tax revenue for the city of Revere is approximately $43 million, and then we've also done a study as part of the D A G work to kind of assign a conservative number of costs associated with that, what are our additional burdens on police and fire and things like that. And so we believe the net tax revenue to the city of Revere, after all those things are figured in, is approximately $30 million, which, you know, would make us easily the largest taxpayer in the city of Revere, and obviously make a big impact, we think, you know, for much good in the city. In addition to that, I'm going to lean forward again, just so I can-- You know, this is a slide that kind of shows you all the different pieces. As I said, you know, $220 million or so of, I'll gladly take it as a cheat sheet, the $220 million or so of additional money to be spent on roads and things like that. And then, oh, awesome, thank you. All the parks, all those pieces that I described, the bike roadways, we expect that these buildings, for the most part, will be lead gold, you know, we're working carefully toward that process. We've got a variety of different other pieces that are on here, the bike paths and all the things that I described for you before as well. This is a transit-oriented development site. We've, you know, gone through extensively trying to, as we've worked within the D A G process, we've worked extensively with you folks to try and prepare what I think is the most in-depth traffic study that I've ever been a part of in my 25 or 30 years of doing this kind of work. And as a result of that, we've done a comprehensive look at a variety of mitigation items, improvements throughout the region, the most significant of which include improvements to Route 1A, improvements to Bell Circle, improvements throughout the entire region, as we noted. In fact, we looked at 53 different intersections, we were assigned to those all the way throughout the site, and each of those intersections were studied, and for each of those intersections, we've come up for a plan of action that will all be implemented as we phase in the project. In addition to that, you know, this is the slide that kind of lists the areas in which we've proposed mitigation. So these are essentially roadway changes that we would propose to make, working with the city of Revere, as well as the city of Boston and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We've met extensively both with the city of Revere as well as with Mastod. Everything that we're proposing here has been vetted with Mastod staff, as well as the city of Revere and the city of Boston. So these are all implementable sorts of opportunities, we believe, and again, you know, we expect to spend money on those. These are, just give you slides to show you that the site today is not geared to manage stormwater at all, frankly. So our effort will be to create a site that is resilient to the coming floodwaters and create a site that is a responsible neighbor, and hopefully, you know, will manage stormwater, you know, well over time. So this gives you a sense of the onsite mitigation for what it is we're proposing for managing stormwater. Again, this was a particular session that we spent with the D A G to go in detail into the work that we proposed to do here on site. So this just gives you a sense of, here's an outdoor performance theater, which will, you know, for 99% of the time, will be a performance theater and be a great civic space, but on the days when there is a storm, a 100-year storm, that area will fill up with water, and then as the storm system subsides, then that water will flow out responsibly from out of the site. So this gives you a sense of, you know, kind of how the site can work with that 100-year storm. We also talked within the D A G about being part of a potential solution with a berm that might be protective, particularly the Beaumont School parking lot, which is a main spot for flooding to happen. We know that that happened twice just this past winter. So we'd love to be part of the solution, and we, you know, raise these things in conjunction with the city of Revere and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, because obviously it takes a combined approach for these sorts of solutions to work. But that berm in the lower right-hand corner of the slide is kind of one of our proposals to protect that area of Beaumont and parts of our site. This just gives you a sense of the phasing, so these are the phases that we're working under. So all of these phases will be memorialized in the final decision that you'll hopefully be ticking up over the next two to three weeks after this public hearing. You know, our first phase is one hour, which is right at Beaumont Station, which includes a hotel, the Innovation Center that I described, the retail that I described, about 80,000 square feet of retail, as well as the residential that we think is needed to set the table to make the site, you know, something different than what it is, which is a place where people will live, and we're excited to move forward with that. So as you can see, I shortened my presentation as best I could on this, but hopefully I was able to get across the message that I think you've heard quite a bit from me. I'm happy to answer questions if you like.
Thank you. Any other proponents here this evening? Any proponents?
Good evening. Frank Strangie, city planner, also chairman of the Project Review Board. This is the board that's been cited by ordinance to oversee the special permit process and make recommendations to the city council on the P U D. The Project Review Board consists of myself as chairman, the building inspector, the fire chief, the city engineer, and the DPW superintendent. I submitted a very thorough and comprehensive report to the city council today. We worked very hard on it. Hopefully, we held the developer to the highest standards we could to protect the city, and I can tell you, if I'm working with the developer, it wasn't too hard holding them to those standards, because those are the only standards they know how to design projects under. So it was a very, very easy, not an easy process, but they were ahead of the curve and they knew where we were coming from, and it was very thorough. So this report is very comprehensive, and there identifies 10 sections that have specific conditions that we put on the developer for mitigation measures, and it outlines their responsibilities. responsibilities. When you read the report, you'll see the first section deals with master plan and mix of land uses. That outlines their obligation for land uses for each phasing of the site, the percentage of land uses. One of the goals through that section also is to have the developer integrate this project into the community, specifically the Beauchamp Square area. We don't want Beauchamp Square to be a separate entity from this development. This development has to integrate the improvements that they're undertaking into Beauchamp Square and make key connections to the square, as well as North Shore Road and Shirley Ave area and Winthrop Avenue. They'll have key pedestrian paths and bicycle paths that connect to those areas and also Revere Beach. So that was a significant portion of the mix of land uses and what we expect under the master plan goals. The next section was open space landscaping and aesthetic controls, that's a very thorough section that outlines the developer's responsibility under all those, under open space landscaping and aesthetic measures. It outlines the 25% requirement that the City Council have included in the special permit, which amounts to like possibly 13 acres in the city of Revere. The third section is infrastructure, resiliency, and sustainability. Key components of infrastructure are sewer water, drainage, stormwater control, and I can tell you regarding impact in the city of Revere, there will be zero impact on our sewer system because the developer's going to be required to tie directly into the city of Boston system, to the East Boston Pump Station, which goes into the MWRA system, does not come into our system. But there will be an interim connection until that line is built, and I'll talk about that later on. Also, water. Water we have is a direct connection from the MWRA system. It will be a separate meter just for this project, so it won't impact our water system, water distribution system, which affects the Beauchamp area and the Shirley Ave area. So there will be no impact on that. Environmental quality. We outline the developer's commitments to environmental quality, dealing with dust control, shadows, wind control, wind effects, noise, odors, and air pollution. And the next one is master plan project phasing. As Tom indicated, that the same phasing plan is outlined here, it commits the developer to that phasing plan. There is some flexibility with the mix of uses that they can be changed from one phase to the other by review of the Site Planner Review Committee. You'll see that in there. Municipal benefits and impacts, quite extensive in terms of the benefits that will be coming to the city and the impacts that will be mitigated. The biggest one is transportation, traffic mitigation, pedestrian safety. Having worked with VHB on the Mahogany Sun Transportation Mitigation Program, I can tell you this is very significant and equal to that, and we try to hold them to that. They had a very, we had a very good program for the Mahogany Sun Traffic Mitigation, and we hold them to equal, come up with equal mitigation as we've looked at in that project. And the, let's see, the last section, well, let me tell you that the main, as Tom indicated, the main traffic mitigation corridors that we're looking at is Route 1A, Route 1, Route 16 interchange, Bell Circle, very extensive improvements in Bell Circle, Revere Beach Parkway, Beauchamp Square, Brown Circle, Route 60 and Revere Street, and Route 1A and Revere Street. There are like 11 intersections and major corridors that we're analyzing for traffic safety. They have specific mitigation measures in that packet. There's an item in here for continuing reporting responsibilities. We want the developer to be accountable to the city, especially to the City Council and the mayor, as the project progresses, and come back and report to the City Council and the mayor annually or as needed on project status and updates. And the last one is a requirement for a project development agreement. There are a number of issues that are outlined in this project review report that have to be addressed further in terms of specific terms and conditions that have to be made, and I'll just outline them quickly. The developer's responsibility for surface street network development, the ownership of that, the construction of that, and requirements the city is going to have for maintaining easements for water, sewer, and drain utilities within those private ways. The developer's commitment and maintenance responsibility to respect protected open space and recreational areas on the project site. The process by which the interim sewer system will be constructed in the city of Revere for Phase One, and their mitigation payments to the city. The process for completing the sanitary sewer bypass line from Revere to Boston, and processes in terms of the future disconnection and capping of that interim sewer line once the new line is constructed. There's a process which will talk about construction management plan to be developed and finalized for each phase of development for the Revere project site. Construction management plan is going to be a plan that outlines their responsibilities during the construction, that's going to deal with transportation, traffic of trucks, workers, parking, mitigation for air, dust, and noise, and a traffic roof for trucks. We'll need further documentation of the final, when the final environmental impact report is completed, for the offsite traffic improvements. Those need to be phased by each phase of the project. That'll be outlined in that section of the project development agreement. And finally, we'll just, we're going to have incorporated agreements respecting job training and workforce development for the project. So it's a, we try to do our best and include every facet of mitigation we could talk about that protects the city, and although it took nearly 40 pages, I think we're pretty comprehensive, and after the City Council reads it, I'm sure you're going to have your own ad beyond ours. But I'd just like to thank the Project Review Board for all the work. We had many meetings with the developer throughout the process, and I also sat in on the Development Advisory Committee meetings, which was very thorough, and I included a lot of recommendations that came out of that forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? And I want to keep anyone from the city to keep in mind that this will be going to subcommittee. How are you?
Just fine, Madam President. My name is Bob O'Brien. I'm Director of Strategic Planning and Economic Development for the city of Revere. I was also prejudiced, prejudiced, privileged to be the moderator for the Development Advisory Group, which was appointed and convened by the mayor to provide community input into the PUD process for the Suffolk Downs development. That group was involved, as Tom indicated, from the outset of the PUD planning process. We met on seven different occasions for working sessions that extended to two hours and more, and covered every element of the PUD as it was evolved. There can be no doubt that the influence of the PUD and the advice of the peer review group which supported us had a very definite positive effect on the outcome of that process which is now before you. We think also that it represented a consensus of the group and the various interests that were represented. I will say that there were some differences of opinion on various matters, and choices had to be made in the final presentation, which is reflected before you. I have addressed my written comments to you to give you some idea of the background of those issues and the choices that were made, but there is no question that what is now before you is a plan that is transformative, not just for the Suffolk Downs site, but indeed for the city of Revere. Tom O'Brien indicated last week that this was as professional a community process as he had been involved in. If indeed that's the case, it is precisely because of its collaborative nature. It was a response to the leadership of the mayor, but certainly also to the support of the City Council, and without any question, the competence of the Project Review Board and the members of the Development Advisory Committee and the Peer Review Group, two of whom, I might add, are two of the most active members of the DAG who are sitting on the council, in Councilor Novosowski and McKenna, who made tremendous contributions. Some of the members of the group will be speaking to you. I don't need to repeat what is in the process, what is in the document before you. They speak for themselves. The planned unit development and the related order of conditions are a combined product that deserves your attention. We have all of the members of the advisory group, of the peer review group, Project Review Board, and not least the whole HYM investment team, whose responsiveness and candor and competence has been evident throughout this process. The city of Revere owes them all a great debt, and we commend this document to your attention and to your, recommend your approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Madam President, I guess I'll be considered a proponent. I just want to thank Tom O'Brien and his group. The traffic analysis they did for the city of Revere, I don't think it's ever been undertaken, and they spent a lot of time, a lot of money, and they have recommended some tremendous improvements. We've had some back and forth, but I think overall, the recommendations they're making is going to really make a dramatic improvement in the traffic in the city of Revere, and the amount of money they're committing to make these improvements is astonishing. So I think a lot of good's going to come out of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any proponents?
I'm Ed Devoe. I live at 216 Crescent Avenue, Beauchamp. Before I came here tonight, I had come home from a day of meetings with the mayor and other people, and I found this on my PC, it was left by my grandson, and they wore his happy sunglasses. And so I thought I'd bring them tonight for a prop because, you know, bottom line is, I'm very happy to be here tonight. You know, happy for the meetings that happened today because they were all indications of great things happening within Beauchamp, but more happy to be here because it's the culmination of a long project to look at every aspect of this plan. And more importantly, I'm happy to be here because I truly believe in this project and I support this project. I believe that the project really, as has been said before, represents a transformational event that will positively impact the city's economy and its stature as a residential and commercial destination in the metropolitan Boston area, and it may even get us more good press going forward. I also believe that the development can bring with it many opportunities, and in particular, for positive changes to Beauchamp. My focus throughout this whole effort, it was primarily in the Beauchamp area, but also looking at the project as a whole and the city as a whole, because as I've attested to many times, I bleed Revere blue, I bleed Beauchamp blue if that's our color, and it is our color. I am totally in support of trying to do everything we can to improve the quality of life and maintain the quality of life in Beauchamp. And I think that HYM during every step of this process is doing that. It's been talked about, the one Beauchamp Square. In the early process, HYM and Tom O'Brien were talking about trying to do everything they could to bring people into their project. Right from the very beginning, we started talking with them about saying, we need to make the project bring people out into Beauchamp Square as well. We need HYM Beauchamp Square and the original Beauchamp Square to be one Beauchamp Square, and HYM is totally on board with that concept and that idea. That being said, in order to make that happen, we are also going to need to look to the city to commit to putting resources in place to make sure that the original Beauchamp Square, the businesses in that area, the look and feel of that area are able to be improved along with what's taken place within the HYM project. HYM will be donating a certain amount of money, but I think there's going to be more money and resources that needs to come to the city, because if we don't, we're going to end up with a beautiful shining star within the Suffolk Downs area and a not-so-shining star in the Beauchamp Square area, and we don't want that to happen. The other thing I just wanted to point out, and one of the other reasons why I'm totally in support of this project is, again, it was talked about, the $50 million that's being put up by HYM to address traffic flow. You know, I think the one thing that's important to understand and that's been stated here is that, you know, without HYM's investment of $50 million, the traffic problems that exist and have existed are not going to go away because the state is not in a position right now to step in and do something. So if we want the traffic to continue to get worse without taking any steps to improve it, then, you know, that's what the HYM project is going to do. So I think that's another reason for supporting this project. I know that there are issues relative to the number of residential units, and that's going to be something that's going to be discussed, I'm sure, going forward. I think that, you know, going back to many discussions that have taken place during the DAG meetings and other discussions I've had with other people, is that, you know, if you don't have enough residential units, it's not going to support the bringing in of commercial office units or the bringing of restaurants and retail stores. You need residential units to support that, so we need residential units within that project. Finally, I would just say in closing that, you know, HYM, as has been stated here, and I can't say enough about how open they have been throughout this process. Going forward, and as Bob O'Brien has mentioned a number of times at the DAG meetings, you know, this is not the end. This is the beginning of our next step, and our next step is going to be further collaboration, further discussions. There are a lot more details to be worked out. We all need to calmly discuss and vet out the issues, not let politics get in the way of trying to make a good thing happen here. And I strongly request of everybody here and everybody within the city to not, you know, take their eye off the prize in terms of the project, but to look at what needs to be done for the betterment of that project and how we move forward to make it happen. That being said, again, I just want to say that I firmly believe that, you know, we're in a good shape, we're in good position with this developer. I don't think there's a developer that I've talked with in many years, and I've worked with a number of them, that have the caliber and the integrity of HYM, so thank you all very much, appreciate the time.
Thank you. Just so I can time this, can I see by a show of hands the number of proponents that are planning on speaking this evening? Okay, given the size of this, I'm going to start timing and just giving everyone a five-minute minimum or limit, and again, this will be going to the zoning subcommittee, so I welcome everyone to come up and speak. I am just going to be watching the time, and I welcome anyone that has more comments that exceed that timeframe to appear before the zoning subcommittee that this council will be holding. So, thank you, and if you would please try to coordinate amongst yourself to line up and always remember to state your name and address for the record. Sorry, Dr. Dakin.
Thank you, Madam President. Paul Dakin, former Superintendent of Schools, living on Prospect Ave still. I know there's smiles on faces for me to be here talking in public for a development project, because you know, over the years, I've very much spoken against some 250 Broadway, which had over 100 kids come in. My concerns always were, we didn't have room in the schools, and when you took a look at the tax revenue that was coming in versus what it cost to put those kids in schools, we were on the negative side of things, squeezing kids in buildings, and at the same time, the taxes that we get from that facility not being able to cover the costs. And I could go on with that, and looking at Northgate and even Overlook Ridge, which has, as of today, 83 kids in it, at $15,000 apiece to educate, that's $1.2 million to educate the kids coming out of Overlook Ridge that I was told here years ago wouldn't have any kids coming out of it. So take a look at the tax revenue coming out of Overlook Ridge, take $1.2 million away from it because that's what you're spending on schools. Those are the reasons why I opposed development. Plus, we were crowded. But you folks have done something about the crowdedness over the year. You still have work to do, though. As a council and as a school committee, you listened, and we redeveloped schools. And Council McKenna, you can be proud. When I still go to places around the state in education circles, they talk wonders about what's going on in Revere, and the new buildings and the pride that comes with that is one of the shining stars of the city that we can still buff up even more. You're going to need a high school. You need a high school already. Applications are in for that. If we could start it today, it would be costing about $220 million for that school. Now, take a look at this facility down at Suffolk Downs. As a mixed-use development, something that I haven't seen before when we were putting up 250 Broadway or we were building out at the quarry, with a mixed-use development where there'll be hotels there, there'll be retail there, and there'll be housing, I do feel that the housing component... I do feel that the housing component will have kids in it, but my problems will be allayed, in a way, by the fact that I know we have a high school project that's going to have to come to bear. But more than that, this project is going to generate $43 million a year into the tax revenue. And I know the small number of kids that will come out of that facility will put the balancing point in favor of the city. That, along with schools and the money that from that that will be needed to rehab potentially the high school if the school committee thinks it's wise enough to use that as a middle school because you need middle school space too, you will have a funding stream for that with much less of a problem with students coming out of this new facility. It will be a facility that garners funding for the community versus the others I always opposed. That's why I'm here as a proponent, and I would ask you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dakin. Just, again, if you can coordinate amongst yourselves and just line up so I know who the next speakers are, and again, name and addresses for the records.
Madam President, fellow councilors, a lot of you councilors do know me. My name is Bill Rogers. I'm a lifelong resident of the city, resident of Beauchamp, as a matter of fact, and a professional engineer. I've been doing this for 40-plus years. I asked to be on the committee. I asked to offer my expertise. Basically, I was concerned about traffic. I knew the issues. I've been driving into Boston for a long time. The long and short of it is, their plan for traffic mitigation is excellent. A lot of the things that they proposed to do were things I've been thinking about as I drive into Boston in my truck in every day. Anyway, with that said, I also want to say that I looked at the construction phasing. I looked at utility work. And I really find no flaws. It looks very good. I'd like to be part of the phasing later on. But I also want to say, one of my projects I did, I worked in Virginia for six years, and I lived in Reston, Virginia, part-time. Reston, Virginia is a small, probably less than half the size of what H Y M proposes to do. It was an unbelievable place to live. I lived there. I dined there at Capital Grills, at great restaurants. I entertained myself there. It was an all-inclusive city that was just wonderful for both young professionals, but also for the tax revenue for the area. And it still did not offer what this site offers, the ocean. I'm a seafaring person. And this site, right here with the transportation and the fact that you're near the Atlantic Ocean, it's incredible. This will be a huge success. I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, councilors, for the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm a technical staff to the Design Advisory Group. And I think just following up on the previous speaker, our role was really with respect to the transportation aspects of the project. And I think what you've had presented to you is basically, it's a well-thought-out development. And I think as you look through the information that's been put forth to you, the plan for this development is really to develop something that is mixed-use, as you heard, but not an auto-centric development. And I think the different spin that I want to put on it, from which you heard before and what our role as technical staff was, is really to make sure as the developer was developing these transportation improvements, you heard the $50 million. What the focus of these improvements really are is to develop a transportation infrastructure that creates capacity on roadways so that what we don't have is a development that spurs additional traffic through the neighborhood streets. And really, that was the focus of what our review was, not only to check the technical aspects of this project, but I think what you heard is, this is a very porous development from the standpoint of connecting to the neighborhoods for pedestrians and bicycles to be able to come in and embrace this development. But from an auto-centric perspective, the traffic and the improvements are really built to keep the traffic on the major arterials and not have it spill over into the neighborhood streets. And that's been a focus of this mitigation program. It's been a focus of what our role has been as technical support to the Design Advisory Group. And we think the developers put forth a plan that really, coupled with these improvements and the way that the project is advanced in a very thoughtful measure, will be able to do that. Deliver these improvements to the city, deliver a project that really focuses on connecting the neighborhoods but not overburdening the city's resources. And I think that's what you've heard is a constant theme, and you'll hear that as well as from a transportation perspective. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, thank you. My name is Al Rain. I work for AECOM, a planning and design firm, and I was honored to be on the Peer Review Committee, sitting under the DAG meetings and reviewing materials. I'm AECOM's National Transit-Oriented Development Practice Director. I was heavily involved in the Assembly Square project, which I know is an important point of reference for Suffolk Downs. A long time ago, I was Secretary of Economic Development for the Commonwealth. And even longer ago, I spent the first 14 summers of my life at Point of Pines. And it's always nice to be home. Let me just say a couple of words about why I think this is an exceptionally good Transit-Oriented Development, T O D, project, beginning with why that's important. Transit-Oriented development is a big deal for two reasons. First of all, it's definitely where the real estate market in eastern Massachusetts is trending, both residential and commercial developers, and people like transit-oriented development. And secondly, T O D enables the city to accommodate all the growth that's in this project in a way that is much more sustainable and specifically has much less impact on the highway and roadway system than would otherwise be the case. That's why you do transit-oriented development. Merely being next to the blue line, that's obviously critical, but that doesn't automatically make it a good transit-oriented development project. But a number of things in the plan make it a very strong T O D project. The mix of density, mixed uses, the public realm plan, which is exceptional, and the strategy for parking combined, those are the key ingredients of T O D, and I think they're here in abundance. Let me just give you a couple of specific examples why I think that's true. The 50-50 residential-commercial split that the city has required not only ensures that you'll have a job base in the Revere side of the project, but from a T O D perspective, it's ideal because it means that every morning rush hour and every evening rush hour, people are commuting in and they're commuting out. And it just optimizes the capacity of the T to help this happen. The public realm network, the way in which the retail at street level interfaces with the streets and the sidewalk and the walkability and the bike network is exceptional. I see these all over the country. This plan is really, really good. The bus shuttle onsite is a big deal. Much of this development will be within short-walking distance of one station or the other, but not all of it. And not everybody can walk, and not everybody can bike, and we have this thing called winter. And the bus shuttles mean that this thing is going to work as a transit-oriented development, not just in good weather, but all year round and for everybody. I think they have the parking right. The parking ratios are good, strong T O D ratios, and the commitment to revisit them based on real experience in future phases is, I think, exactly the right strategy. And finally, this is a big project. It's really not one project. It's going to take 30 years, as Tom says, all the time. It means that Phase One is really, really important in terms of how it's composed and the tone it sets. And Phase One of this project, fortunately, is going to concentrate activity, not just bulk, but the most active parts of the project are going to be concentrated from day one in the immediate vicinity of the two stations. And just telling everybody in the real estate market and everybody in Revere and East Boston that this is a transit-oriented place from day one. So I think it is a terrific plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, council members. Paul Rupp. I've been in and around the city for some 40 years now, working on different things, as Bob O'Brien often reminds me. And in this capacity, I was asked to be one of the peer reviewers for the project. I've got to say, I've never seen such a detailed project come before the city, such a well-thought-out, such a comprehensive analysis of a project than this. And my compliments to Tom O'Brien and H Y M for doing a fantastic job in that regard. Secondly, the review process has been unlike anything I've seen in any city or town. And it's been detailed, it's been open, it's been lengthy, it's been trying for some people, but it's also been eye-opening for a lot of people. And I think it's a great job done, and I applaud the mayor and Bob O'Brien and Frank Stringi and the City Council for partaking of that and for constructing that. And lastly, I know that Jeffrey Dirk talked about the very detailed traffic improvements off-site. I'd just like to note that some of those off-site improvements, I think, may be the key to unlock some long-stalled state transportation improvements that can be very beneficial to the city. So we can build upon those things, and we can try to carry some things like the Route 1 Improvement Project forward and perhaps commuter rail station at Wonderland. Anyway, I think this is a great process, and I think this is a great beginning for the city, and I think it's going to end well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, my name is Matthew Latell. I'm an architect and urban designer at U T L Inc. We were engaged in a peer review capacity. I've been participating in the meeting since June. I want to very briefly attest to the thoroughness of those proceedings. The developer went very deep on a number of topics. We were kept on schedule. There were a number of comments that were fielded. As an architect and urban designer, I'm particularly concerned with the character of the streetscape and the character of the buildings. They are one part of the project that's probably the most difficult to predict with some accuracy, but I will say that I believe that there is a very thorough framework in front of you. And coupled with the long history of design comments and feedback that the Design Advisory Group has given, that there is ample material there to provide direction for the project going forward.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the City Council. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rafael Maris, and home for me and my family is on Bellingham Ave. in Beauchamp, not far from Suffolk Downs. And I'm also the Executive Director of the Neighborhood Developers. It's been my honor to serve on the Suffolk Downs Development Advisory Group with some of you over the past five months. I've been through many planning processes before in advisory groups. I've not participated in any that have been as thorough and detailed and professional and on schedule as this one. I have to thank Bob O'Brien and his team for doing everything to keep us informed, to remind us, and to give us the opportunity to participate and to be heard. I'd like to thank the mayor also for appointing and convening a group of members with such a wide range of areas of expertise and perspectives. And I think it's been very helpful to tease out both the opportunities and the challenges of this project. I was also impressed with H Y M and the active efforts to seek input from the City of Revere, from community stakeholders and from residents. Tom O'Brien and Doug Mans rolled up their sleeves during some of our meetings, quite literally, and never shied away from a question. There isn't enough time to describe all the opportunities and challenges here. I'd like to just give you some highlights. You've heard from others, so I'll try to shorten my statement. 25% of the 52-acre site in Revere will be open space. The neighborhoods, the new neighborhoods will be accessible to two different T stops. They will be walkable, and there will be an extensive bicycle network, 5.7 miles. There will be new retail, office, lab, hotel, and residential space, and an innovation center right at Beauchamp Square, open to the public. There are some remaining challenges, and I would be remiss not to bring them up here. The neighborhoods being created at Suffolk Downs could end up being segregated from the rest of Revere. There is no affordable housing opportunities on the site on the Revere side, which means that few of our current residents are going to be able to live there. The increased traffic, despite the project transportation's improvements, are still a risk, particularly if we insist on too much parking on the site because people will be incentivized to drive there. I think a better solution to dealing with parking is to allow people in Beauchamp only to park if they're residents there. And then, finally, I would say that these challenges are not insurmountable and that we should keep working on those. I appreciate the opportunity tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm going to be really short, and you'll be happy about that. So I'm Kathleen Heiser, 51 Endicott Avenue, and I'm the President of the Beauchamp Improvement Committee. And as such, I have been invited, had been invited, to be on the advisory board. And I attended every single meeting, and they were long and wonderful. Tom is amazing. And I want to say, and you probably all really already know this, this is the most gentleman I have ever met. I have seen people come up to him and say things not such nice ways. He's so patient. He listens. He really, really listens. And he never shows one iota of being perturbed, trying to rush anybody. Well, maybe so. But we've never seen it. And it's a really rare and wonderful thing. So I just want to say, as the President of Beauchamp Improvement, we sort of are the watchdogs of our own community. We want to see what's going to happen. We're the neighbors, the closest neighbors. And so we're really concerned about it being integrated, the project, with Beauchamp Square. And I'm sure it's going to be because we are talking about it, continuously talking about it, and I think that's what everybody wants. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Tom, maybe you can share some of those tips with us on the council.
Greetings, council members. My name is Alexis Smith. I'm a senior planner with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, or M A P C, and a member of the DAG. I'd like to start by thanking the city and all those who've been convening the DAG. It's been a wonderful opportunity to be a part of it. And I'd also like to thank H Y M for their transparency and their responsiveness. The detailed level of information provided about the development proposal made it really clear that these meetings weren't just intended to simply check a box, but to really actively engage the DAG members and equip us to offer substantive, real input, and that's very, very much appreciated. M A P C really welcomes the development of Suffolk Downs and is supportive of the project vision of a vibrant, mixed-use neighborhood. There's so much about this project to be praised, a lot of which we've seen evolve over the course of the DAG meetings. There's extensive open spaces with integrated wetlands preservation, outdoor spaces that will be an asset to the entire community, redesigned plazas that create really distinct neighborhoods with their own sense of place, true transit-oriented development with substantial pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, and a real substantial step towards the region's housing production goals. However, as M A P C has expressed previously, there are some missed opportunities here. The first is a lack of any affordable housing units in the Revere portion of the project. While we very much appreciate and respect the city's economic development goals, we believe that jobs don't need to come at the expense of affordable housing and that the two really are meant to go hand in hand. Over half of Revere's residents are low-income, and we think it would be a disservice to both the city and to the Suffolk Downs development if the majority of Revere's residents can't afford to live there. Also, it's our position that the development should include family-sized units, a small number of family-sized units of three bedrooms or more. The project vision of a vibrant and complete community, a real neighborhood rather than just a development project, is really fantastic. But this vision can't be achieved if children aren't present. Concern over the capacity of Revere's school system is very much understandable and very appreciated, but I note that the project itself is projected to result in a substantial increase in net revenue to the city, a portion of which could be dedicated to offsets the cost of school enrollment. I ask that the city take these issues into account when considering both this and future projects and take steps to ensure that new development is reflective of and really inclusive of the Revere community. We truly appreciate our inclusion in the discussion thus far, and we look forward to continuing to work with you as Revere plans for its future. Thanks.
Thank you. We want to welcome our colleague on the school committee, Carol Ty.
Thank you. Carol Ty, number 51 Endicott Avenue, lifelong resident of Beauchamp and Revere, coming up on my 59th year of service in the Revere Public Schools. So, just to let you know that I have the Longview, and probably only John Powers and I remember when it wasn't Beauchamp Square, it was the Depot. And that was the place that we grew up. And... And that was the place that we grew up. And we see a vision of a neighborhood, we see that, and expect that it will be a possibility. I know this is not a perfect project because human beings cannot create a perfect project. It has to move, and it will move, and I'm confident that the problems that have been mentioned today are problems that can be solved because we have been working on solving these all the way through with our meetings, going through every area of the project. Every time there was something on traffic, we all understood that, we asked that, changes were made. And I have to repeat that they are wonderful listeners, they are a really classy outfit, they know what they are doing. I have every confidence that they will continue to listen to the citizens of Revere for what they have. But the real reason I support this is that I desperately want a new high school. And I see this as the only way we will ever be able to get it. I know there are people who say, "Why do we have to do all this down there? Can't it just stay there?" No, the world can't stay the way it has always been. And there are more and more people who are coming into the city, and more and more, more and more families are having more and more children. And we love children. We don't want to keep them out. We just want to be able to service them properly. And I believe that when this comes in, that we will be able to have sufficient tax revenue so that we will be able to. Now, think of what we've lost in the last few years, okay? So we lost Wonderland, we lost Suffolk Downs, and more recently, we lost Neco. What do we have for commercial development? And the only way that we can ever get enough money, because even though we've been lucky enough to have the state at some time in the early five-building school project that we had, in the early stages, we were getting 90%, you know? We'd pay $1 and they'd give us the other nine. But that's not happening anymore. And we need to have commercial development that we can tax at the higher rate so that we can support the schools. Now, I have been before this council, well, probably not all of you younger folks, but some of you who have been here for a longer time saying, "I'm opposed to having these developments around," you know? Just as Dr. Dakin said, you know, when it started there, when I was a teacher, I was opposed to the 250 Broadway because I saw that McKinley School and thought, "How, where are we ever going to put these kids to?" But this is a little bit different. If we can continue with this project and get the tax revenue that they will produce, then we will be able to do that and be able to create a new middle school. And I just believe that with our continuing school enrollment, that this particular project is really transformative for the city. It will make our neighborhood so much more the pleasant place to be because they understand the connection between the two Beauchamp Squares. They understand what they need to do in order to live as a unit and not as an isolated part of it. I do not believe that that will happen. I really think that they can be an effective partner in all of the problems that we have in the school, most of which can be solved by new construction, by a new Revere High School. And I look forward to that coming and working with HYM so that we can make that happen. I congratulate all of you and the mayor and everyone. This has been an open, open, welcoming process, and everyone's concerns have been heard. So congratulations to all of you. I am a proponent. I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan McGuire, retired Revere School Committee member. Much has been said. Proud Beauchamp resident, Pearl Avenue. You know, in the school system, we have the four Rs: rigor, relevance, relationships, and resilience. This group, this company, has all those four Rs in spades. But they have a most important fifth R, which is much needed, and it's respect. They have respect for neighborhood groups, they have respect for the City Council, its neighbors, they have respect for what's outside of the project, which is very, very unique in this day and age. And I personally want to thank them as a lifelong Revere resident and look forward to living there someday. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, Madam President, City Council. Dimple Rana, 49 South Ave, Revere resident, and also the Director of Healthy Community Initiatives for the city. I just have a few comments. I actually, right before coming back to City Hall tonight, I was at a regional meeting put together by Livable Streets, which is a biking and pedestrian advocacy organization that brought together regional municipal transportation planners and city planners and also other advocates for biking and also pedestrian activities. And I was happy to also inform them of the HYM development and also their plans to increase multimodal transportation and access for not just Suffolk Downs and for Revere, but for the region. And I know that there's going to be plenty of people calling you, Tom, after that meeting today, but I did want to share that I also had the opportunity for being a newer DAG member, but adding some perspectives on healthy communities and advocating for transportation, transit, and also open space and recreation opportunities, but also the programming that also is going to make the development thrive and be robust. And, you know, those also include the support of HYM to include local Revere businesses to also have retail opportunities on-site and helping to also make sure that our economy is also linked to the development, which I, again, thank you for that. And also for considering a potential idea of maybe a Revere public market similar to what Boston has, with their Boston Public Market, where many different food vendors are able to sell their different, unique boutique type of items and food items, and are also able to produce local jobs and also, again, local businesses. And then I also just want to add the piece around workforce development and how critical this is going to be. And again, a developer to include this as part of their assessment and also their plans is also something that I don't think I've seen as well, and I applaud HYM in doing that, especially around youth workforce development and training opportunities and making sure that all Revere residents will have the opportunity to not just be able to maybe work at the Suffolk Downs development, but also increase their opportunities and jobs that they are doing right now. And lastly, I do want to recommend that a health impact assessment still be considered as this is a TOD, Transit-Oriented Development, that this is going to also be important for us as a city to look at the health impacts that we have. And there's also potential as a developer to look into community investment tax credits that could also be an investment for both the development and for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Is there anyone, just by show of hands, that's here in support but doesn't want to speak? No? Looks like everyone spoke. All right. Seeing and hearing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone here opposed to the development? Are you raising for a show of hands or to speak?
I will speak.
Oh, so just, if anyone wants to speak, I'm not going to call you. Just approach the podium, state your name and address, and speak.
Okay. So I'm on the, can you hear me? Okay. My name is Mary Gandolfo, and I'm a Revere resident. And I am not opposed to the entire development. I think a lot of it has some great ideas. What I do feel very uncomfortable with is from the, and I know there's some road improvements that are in this, but as far as the people living on the other side of Revere, near Route 1, off of Route 1, the Route 1 traffic north and south is horrendous. All weekend long, every day after 1:30 till whatever time at night, it's just constant. It used to start on Thursdays, now it starts on Monday. You can't move. You can't get on Route 1, you can't get off of Route 1 at the Revere exits near the Lynn Street area. You're taking your life in your hands to try to get that exit because cars are backing up behind you on Route 1 and you cannot move. You're stuck in it. And people are still coming to try to get off Route 1. So then trying to get on Route 1 if you want to go to Peabody or Saugus, it's horrendous. So I don't know if these fixes that they talked about, maybe they'll help the Beauchamp area get the traffic off their roads and back onto Route 1, which I'm just not sold on what's going to happen with this problem with the traffic. I also feel that there are too many units in this project of housing, residential units. I feel there's just too many, adding too many people to the city, to the traffic and everything else. I also would like to see some veterans' housing. I know there's some component of some senior housing, but our veterans and our seniors are both a special group, and I would like to see some veterans' housing, I will say. Also, if and when they're deciding to build a new high school, people are talking about that, maybe they could add a youth center onto that because we desperately need a youth center. And maybe some mitigation money could help with those types of things. Also, I am opposed to three-bedroom units because we do, I know that Revere's going to end up with pockets of money, but we're also going to have to hire police and fire. And these are, you know, we have wonderful police and fire. We all love them and all the service they provide. But in the end, this bill goes to the taxpayer. And taxes are very high in Revere. And I think that the seniors and the veterans both feel that a lot. And I know that, you know, this pockets of money come with all of this, but those are also pensions that will need to be paid through many years to come. The planning group, I was a little disappointed that I didn't see more residents from other areas of the city offered to join or, you know, able to get involved in that, to just have a little bit more of a voice about what was happening with this whole project. But I, those are my concerns. And there also was a good-sized article in The Advocate last week, I believe it was, with the state rep from Saugus being extremely concerned about Route 1 traffic, and his constituents have been speaking with him about that situation that goes all the way from Boston through Chelsea, through Revere into Saugus and Peabody. And when they can't get up on Route 1, they're on all our residential streets in Revere. You can't get out of your driveway, you can't get into your driveway. And I'll tell you this, tonight even coming here, traffic was bottlenecked all the way from Squire Road all the way up Washington Avenue, past Mountain Avenue. So that is a real concern. You know, if you, if you have...
We've reached the five-minute mark, ma'am?
Thank you.
So if you have any other comments, you just need to provide the clerk with your address for the record, and any other comments, you can feel free to visit the zoning subcommittee when we have that.
Thank you. And I just hope no one will need an emergency vehicle to come outliving out that way with this traffic because there's no, they're not going to get there in time. As it is now, what will happen later, I don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, you just have to speak with the clerk to provide your address for the record.
Okay. Do I do that now?
Yep, it's right there. Any other opponents? Anyone else opposed that wishes to speak? Going once?
Yes.
Going twice? Any, I saw other hands earlier, no one else wishes to speak? All right, we will close that side of the hearing. Any counselors, keeping in mind this will go to our own zoning subcommittee for extensive commentary on behalf of the City Council. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I assure you I'll be very brief. I think we all realize and recognize that something is going to go with Suffolk Downs, as is something eventually will go at Wonderland, and the Neco site will someday be a very vibrant area. I'm just grateful that we have the expertise and the transparency that's offered by Mr. O'Brien. That gives me a good feeling. My concern is, for this project to be a success, it has to draw from Lynn and the area north of Lynn, Salem, Peabody, Beverly, and further down. And with that happening, it's going to severely impact the Pointe Pines, Oak Island, Lower Revere Street, and also the Boulevard and the Harris Street area. I think that for this to work right for the project and for the residents, we need to think about, as Mr. Rupp alluded to, that station, that commuter station in back of Wonderland, that would give the people from the North Shore a direct link where they could cross over to the Blue Line and go to those two stations that are going to be servicing the project in Beauchamp. And as I said, I'm going to be very brief. I hope that, I bring this out because I hope it's something that Mr. O'Brien will look at. I know that the MBTA right now is not looking to do large-money projects, but when you consider the comments of representatives from Lynn that talk about extending the Blue Line to Lynn with all of the takings that would be necessary, you're probably talking in excess of a billion dollars. To do, get the same effect, I think, at Wonderland, a cost that would probably be $27 to $30 million, an awful lot less. I think that's the way to go, and I hope that, again, Mr. O'Brien, that you will look in that direction and give your expertise and your associates the way we'll, you know, to go there for this. This is very important to the, those areas I mentioned in Revere. Basically, it's East Revere. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselors in boudoir.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be really brief. You know, I've been a cheerleader for this development company, and I'm always saying great things about him, but what was heartening tonight is to hear some of the people I respect most in the city saying exactly what I've been saying and what a class act this development company is, and how lucky we are to have Tom O'Brien and his group developing this site at Suffolk Downs. So I couldn't be happier. I trust him completely, and it's not because I've known him a long time, it's because he has a reputation that anybody can look at. And I'm just, I'm just very happy that they're at the helm of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, colleagues, we'll be holding an extensive zoning subcommittee on this. Are there any other counselors wishing to speak? Okay, this will be going to zoning. The Chair of Zoning is ill this evening, so he was not able to make our meeting, but I am going to coordinate with him to schedule that meeting. I've asked if we could hold it possibly on November 19th. However, I've not been able to coordinate that with him yet, so as soon as the Chair, the clerk, and I coordinate that meeting, we will advertise it publicly, it'll be on the city's website, and we will hold the zoning subcommittee. Zoning. (pause) No? Zoning.
Next item on the agenda is the zoning subcommittee report.
So again, the zoning chair was not present this evening. However, Counselor Zambudo held the zoning subcommittee. So he's going to offer a brief report of the one item on the agenda. And we'll vote on that item this evening. Just give him a quick minute.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. We did hold the zoning subcommittee this evening in spite of the fact that Counselor Rotundo was ill. I tried to fill in ably for him. We, we, we... The bottom line is, we voted to approve the Council on 18308-C-18-09. And so I will ask for a roll call vote, with the conditions, obviously, that were put into the record.
Thank you. And as Counselor Zambudo mentioned, there were many members of the council at that meeting. Everyone was unanimously in favor of it and spoke very highly of the proposal. At this time, I'll ask any councilors, if they have any final commentary. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I'll ask for a roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested for 148 Squire Road, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Janino? Yes. The special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number six, communications. Communication from the Planning Board relative to its recommendation regarding an ordinance further amending Section 17.16.060 of the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to townhouses.
So I don't see anyone from the city here to speak on this. This will be going to the zoning subcommittee for further discussion as it's a communication. Any councilors have any questions? Anyone else?
Hi. Just a point of information, looking at this item and looking through the packet. On the agenda, it lists LI. However, that's not listed on the communication you guys received.
Madam Clerk?
The title on the communication is, that's what the ordinance states as is now.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Sure. Thank you. This will be going to zoning.
Calendar item number seven, motions. Motion presented by Counselor Patch that the may request the Traffic Commission to approve the installation of stop signs at the following locations: Liberty Avenue for a left turn onto Paul Street and Breedon's Lane for a left turn onto Paul Street.
Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, it speaks for itself. There's been several accidents at that location. And we need stop signs to hopefully correct the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar number eight.
Motion presented by Councilors Rizzo and Rotundo that the City Council present a certificate of commendation to Sally Caputo Vranos, AKA Ms. Sally, for her hard work and longstanding dedication to the youth of our community and for spearheading Revere's first trunk-or-treat event at the Romney Marsh Academy on Sunday, October 28th, where hundreds of children and their families were able to celebrate an early Halloween in a safe and fun environment.
Counselor Rizzo?
The irony of this motion tonight. This is a compliment to the Rec Department for putting on a great event. And to Ms. Sally, who I don't know if any of you know who Ms. Sally is. Ms. Sally has worked over at the Recreation Department for many years, flying under the radar, really gets no recognition whatsoever. And this event, in all honesty, and, you know, I give credit to the Rec Department. I give credit to the mayor for, for holding this event. She tried desperately to get me to have an event like this back four, five, six years ago. And it was something that just never came to fruition. We just kept doing what we had been doing for years. And I'm glad this event took place because it was a fun event for everybody who attended. So I'm really looking forward to presenting Ms. Sally with, you know, some recognition. As I say, she's, she's an employee that, you know, really doesn't get acknowledged very often. And I think this would be a good opportunity for us to recognize the job she does. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Keith that the may request Mast-Dot and the Traffic Commission to study and review the traffic signalization on Broadway at Central Avenue and Park Avenue to allow proper flow of vehicles.
So before we start, Counselors Zambudo has recused from this motion. Counselor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. I know that this has been brought forward before, and actually even before I was a counselor. And I know that this requires a lot of different traffic signalizations to coordinate throughout all of Broadway. But I'm just requesting again for something to be reviewed as far as, I think the loops there, I've been told the loops that are underneath the traffic signals are no longer there. So there just needs to be a better coordination. As we all know, when you drive Park Ave during any times of traffic and take the left onto Broadway, you get stuck. Maybe two cars will pass by because they're jammed up at Central Ave. So again, this is something that's been requested. It's been, I mean, like I said, years. Before I was a counselor, I know it's something that was touched, talked about. But I'd like to see some action happen on this process and just get it in front of the Traffic Commission once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morbido?
Thank you. Counselor Keith stole the words right from under my tongue. This motion was submitted in previous years. I'm not a traffic survey, but it doesn't take an expert to see that there is a lag in signalization or timing just traversing the area. So commend Counselor Keith for putting this forward once again. Something has to be done.
Thank you, Counselor Morbido. Any other councilors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councilors Keith and Guanasso that the may request the Director of Parking to review the implementation of a citywide residential permit parking program. This was approved by the City Council two years ago.
So I'm going to start with Counselor Keith, followed by Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Madam President. I also, I wanted to mention that I know that Counselor McKenna, yourself, and also City Clerk Melnick have been working on a little bit more detailed ordinance to solidify this program. But I just, I just, I can't ignore the fact that we spent time up in the City Council chambers. We had community meetings. I know that we've changed the Parking Director since then. And we're giving the new Parking Director an opportunity to tackle some other issues. But we voted on this as a City Council. This is something that we want to see happen. I know that each city, each, each council has a few wishes. And I know that each zone throughout the city are going to have a couple differences. But rather than nickel and dime, or pick apart the Traffic Commission every meeting and add two streets and continuously cherry-pick this program, it's necessary. I know that it's not a one-size-fits-all program, but it's necessary. All of our neighboring towns are pretty much having this happen. We have, we, we can talk about this all night. I don't want it to go on all night. But we have, we have significant parking congestion throughout our city, and we all agree upon that. No one's going to, no one's going to deny that. We need to do something. So I appreciate your work with this, Counselor Janino, and your work, Counselor McKenna. But this needs to start to take, come to fruition much sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Guanasso?
I agree certainly, Madam President, that something has to be done. With the advent of Airbnb and with the migration of new people coming into our community, all of our city ordinances are falling by the wayside. And I think the implementation of resident parking will identify those vehicles that are traversing and parking on our streets on a nightly basis. The only way we can control this, anywhere near control it, is to make certain that those folks that live there park there. Now, I see, right where I live, every day, I see New Hampshire, I see Rhode Island, I see Connecticut, all the time. So we have a new world now. People bought a residence for a home with the good intention that that's where I'm going to reside in a peaceful manner. And lo and behold, you have a new person that comes in, buys a home next to you, and he converts it into a business, making an Airbnb. And you have eight cars piling in. And there's no, no control. The only way we can control this, and this, you can tweak it all you want. And I see on a monthly basis the amount of new streets that are being added to this resident parking when initially we were all informed that it had to be near a major railroad station or it had to be near a T-stop. But there is such a need for it now. We can't wait for this any longer. This is, this is a burden to all of us. And I'm telling you, I think this will be a tremendous way to get rid of all of these cars. You know, you see on a Friday night, taxi cabs parked all around one home. I mean, they're having, obviously, they're having some sort of a party in there. And what's happening to our neighborhood? We're becoming inundated with all these additional cars that really don't live there. And it's not fair to the residents who reside there. And I think this, this will be a simple way to do it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. So in the last month, Sergeant Janino, myself, Counselor Janino, Jessica Janino, and, did I say Counselor Chris Janino? I mean Sergeant Janino. And City Clerk Melnick have been in the talks of having an ordinance written, which should happen by the end of the month. We're trying to, we're looking at Winthrop and trying to maybe adopt Winthrop's ordinance, but tweak, tweak it for Revere a little bit because we do have different situations in Revere than we do in Winthrop. We have T-stations. So I think within the next month, I think by the end of the month, you'll see a new ordinance for citywide parking, permit parking, that will come in front of the council, which we can tweak and add and subtract or whatever you want to do. But that's, that's the plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morbido?
Thank you. Parking availability throughout the years have been increasingly worse. Residents who lived on a street that never had problems 10 years ago now have issues. So I'm one of those residents that had an issue, that never had street parking issues. And now I do. So two years ago, we had a very organized discussion. We had all the ward councilors. We had captains from each ward residence who lived in that ward to represent the voice of the people. Also, every, any citizen was able to speak. It was a very elaborate series of meetings. And there weren't many complaints. But I do understand what works for some streets do not work for others. But we need to get the ball rolling. It was passed. And I am encouraging those who are naysayers, if you're not having an issue now, eventually down the road, it's going to catch up and you will have an issue parking. So I think it's time to relieving the everyday citizen of the nuisance of parking. You know, everyone works all day long. They come home. And it's become, it's almost like we live in Boston. You're driving around the block looking for parking. If you go to the supermarket and you have to lug in groceries, you literally have to put on your hazards or have someone wait outside to help you. For those elderly people who don't have the luxury or don't have someone living with them, it's, it's really a nuisance. So I think we really need to get the ball rolling.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors on this motion?
If I may, very briefly, this is a perfect example of that other 90% I mentioned earlier. You know, not everything happens in this chamber. 90% of our work happens outside of the chamber. And this is one of many issues that myself and my colleagues have been working on. I've been working very closely on this and several other issues with Counselor McKenna. And I'm happy to see that it will come to fruition as a motion and an ordinance change when we hit that point. But I want to thank her for her help. And I also want to thank Counselor Keith. I know his wards hit hard by this. And this is something that he's been really fighting for since he got elected. And the whole city is affected by it. But I think Counselor Keith and Counselor McKenna's wards especially get beat up by this issue. So it's something that I look forward to fixing for the whole city. And I think it's important to keep in mind, as Counselor Morbido mentioned, this is not meant to affect people that are not having this problem yet. But it's meant to make everyone's life a little bit better and to really find a solution that'll work for the whole city. So I look forward to working on it.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the may request National Grid or Red Gate Development to restore the street lighting on the Rita Singer Bridge. A number of streetlights have been out for more than two years, which is a dangerous situation for pedestrians walking from the Beauchemin train station at night. This motion has been requested a number of times, and no action has been taken.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. This is not, this is a National Grid problem. It's been talked about when the Director of National Grid comes forward. And we have been requesting that these lights be restored. There is a number of lights, Revere Beach Parkway, that are out. And it's multiple lights. It's not one light. Because you can call and they'll come and fix the bulb that's out. These are multiple lights on Revere Beach Parkway, on Winthrop Ave, right in front of Red Gate, on the Rita Singer Bridge. And the reason why is, I've been told, it's a conduit. And they have to dig it up. But, and now that National Grid is on, they're on strike. And we have a moratorium. We're not going to get anything done. But this is years and years of these lights not working. So I'm just asking maybe if the mayor could put a little bit of pressure on National Grid or whoever owns the poles. Because, you know, Verizon could own the pole. There's multiple companies that own the poles. So, and the other thing is, I did hear from DeLeo's office because he did read my motion. And he said he would call, Joe Masillo said she would call National Grid tomorrow to get on it. So that's what I have. I know Ira wants to speak, so I'm going to give it to Ira. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor McKenna, just a quick point of information. I know our thing with National Grid right now is gas-specific. So I don't think that the moratorium will affect electric because this is electric-specific, which is a different division of National Grid. Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, you are correct on that. I know Counselor McKenna's been working hard on this as I have been. And I've been working on it before she was even the City Councilor. And, because I remember when they, even before they did the bridge, there was a problem with the lights. And then when they finished the bridge, there was still a problem with the lights. And I don't, I honestly believe, and I told Counselor McKenna that I don't believe Red Gate Development should be on this motion. They have nothing to do with this. They have nothing to do with this. In fact, I would think that Mastod should be on this, because it was a Mastod project when that bridge was built. So I would ask that that be adjusted and put Mastod as part of National Grid's connection. And it is bad up there, there's no question. And National Grid has a lot of lights on the Parkway. We talked about it when National Grid was here, when Dan Cameron came in, and about, you know, Revere is always put on the bottom of their list. And I still feel that way. They are not doing their job in anything. We know that gas is one issue, but electric is just as bad. I have a streetlight that I've been waiting seven months for on Noshua Road at a major intersection. They have not, I was promised and promised and promised, zilch, zero, nothing, nada, from them. And, you know, I would, you know, I know Dan, Dan's a nice guy, and he tries for us. It's their operations people. And I would ask that the next time we ask National Grid to come up here, that Dan bring his boss. And we, you know, I'm not blaming Dan, he's the middle man, he's the messenger. I think we ought to bring his boss and the boss of operations down here and put it to them. So I would ask that this be adjusted, that Mastod, Red Gate Development be taken out, and Mastod be inserted. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna on the amendment.
Thank you, that's fine with me. But I just wanted to say that this motion came up because a parent called me and said that her daughter was walking from the train station, has an apartment on the beach, and she was walking over the bridge, and it was very dark, and she felt unsafe. So I, you know, I think the more people that come into those apartments down in Revere Beach, and they're walking from the T-station, we should make it safe for them to walk. So I think this should be done right away. Thank you.
Anyone else on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
12. Calendar item number 12, motion presented by counselors McKenna and Janino that the may request the Traffic Commission to reduce the price of commercial vehicle permits for vehicles registered to the city of Revere from $420 to $100. The cost for commercial vehicle permits for vehicles registered in any other city shall remain at $420.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. So I've been getting a lot of feedback by this motion. And yes, it's new, and it's been in existence for a year, and it's worked out pretty good. It's gotten a lot of the commercial vehicles off the street. A lot of cities that were parking their commercial vehicles in Revere are no longer doing that. But, you know, we have business owners that have commercial vehicles, and they're getting targeted with tickets because they don't, they don't live in the city, but they have businesses in the city, and they have commercial vehicles that belong to their businesses, and they're getting targeted with tickets. They feel that $420 is a lot of money if they have a business, and if they asked if we could decrease it for the businesses. So I'm just putting this in front of the council. I'll take any suggestions. But I do think $420 for people that are, they live in the city, and they're registered in the city, and business owners that have businesses, I think it is too much. So any suggestions, you know, I'll take, I'll take it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morbeto.
Thank you. Oh my God, I need a new mic. So, and, so key word, commercial vehicles, okay? So this is supposed to be used for businesses. The most obvious thing that comes to mind is, is it really a burden on the resident? Because it's a business expense. I'm not a tax expert, but I believe they can write it off as a business expense if it's associated with a expense, a business expense. So I'd like further discussion with this, maybe put it in a subcommittee. Thanks.
Counselor Novasowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I've been involved with this with the Traffic Commission. It is on the agenda of the Traffic Commission presently. They have been talking about it. They weren't sure which way they wanted to go. I did tell, I did get complaints from a lot of my constituents. They have a small business. They have one van, it's commercial, it's under the weight limit, and, but they're still getting tickets. And I put it in for the $100, and the chief sort of agreed to it and tried to convince the other members, but they tabled it for now. So right now, it's on their table, what we have to do is get it moving off their table to discuss it and be a little more detailed on what we want to do with it. Because a guy with a small business, he does house painting, he does wallpapering, has a van, has ladders on the top, I know that's a big issue with a lot of people, but he's a single guy that has a business. He shouldn't, if he lives here, the vehicle is registered here, he shouldn't have to pay $420 a year. And there was some agreement at Traffic, and what we have to do is go to Traffic folks and say to guys, "Guys, we have to make a move on this." So I would implore that we not put this in committee, that the council send a message to Traffic, "We want something done with this now." Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't really disagree with Counselor McKenna, but this one I do. And actually, I disagree with the whole ordinance now. I was, I was under the impression when this first had gotten rolled out that the commercial vehicles would only be registered to businesses in Revere, and the car, the vehicle had to be registered to the city of Revere. I didn't, I didn't realize that they were going to be offering commercial parking permits to registered vehicles from outside of the city. So one, I totally disagree with that. I think we're selling our streets to businesses outside of the city. Don't agree with that at all. So I would, I'm going to speak to the Traffic Commission about my displeasure with that. I did find out that we've only granted 66 of these since the ordinance was newly updated. So anyway, over the course of the city, that's not a lot. But I think that if we were to decrease the price to $100, you'd see a huge, huge spike. And I've gotten a lot of feedback that, you know, neighbors don't like the untaquility of a lot of these vehicles. Now, some of them are very nice, you know, they're the small, compact, commercial vehicles. But a lot of the neighbors don't like seeing these types of vehicles all over the street, and they say, "Hey, listen, if they have a business, they're making money, and I don't want to hurt, you know, the working man or woman that has a work vehicle." But a lot of times, they, you know, you should probably have a property with the driveway and work it that way and/or not use a take-home vehicle and park it in your business. So I tend to be agree with this, I tend to disagree with this on many different levels. And I'd like to actually change it to not have any vehicles that aren't registered to the city get a parking permit to park on city streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Guanasso.
Madam President, who in the world wants to see a truck parked in front of their home with ladders and paint cans? This is not what community's all about. And it just seems to be, what's happening lately is, on every street, there's a person who does this type of work. The most unsettling thing that's occurring throughout the whole community. If a person has a commercial car or a truck, it has to be properly placed so their neighbors don't have to see it on a daily basis. When you come home on the weekend, you see your car parked next door to you. Next door to me has a big van and all, it looks like I'm in a petrified forest with all cars and paint cans and ladders, and it just doesn't make good neighborly being having all these trucks on all of our streets. And I don't, I think you can go to any street in the community and see these trucks placed there. What enhancement does that do for our, the value of our community? And if they work for themselves, oh, so good, that's fine. And it is a deduction. They can, and to reduce it now? No way. I mean, I mean, you're asking your neighbors to support your business, and I don't think it's fair. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselors and boudos.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is worthy of more discussion, probably, you probably send it to my Legislative Affairs Committee, and, because there's good points on both sides, and I think we need to talk about it a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
If I may briefly, I will be sending this to Legislative Affairs for further discussion of the council. I know it's already in front of the Traffic Commission, but I think that, you know, there's a lot happening with parking right now on the council, so we need to, you know, ask any questions, discuss it any further that we need to. You know, this had good intentions. It was to try to help people that are paying taxes here and are members of the community. It's not stopping a fine. If you're in the wrong, you're still going to get charged, but it's lessening the blow. And I think that, you know, for people paying taxes and doing their due diligence to be good business owners and good residents, give them a little break. I totally agree, you know, you don't want to see that on your property, ladders and things like that. And the good news is, with the proposed resident parking that we're working on, trucks with ladders and things like that wouldn't even be eligible to receive a resident parking sticker. So there's a lot more discussion that needs to happen on this. This is just an idea on behalf of myself and my colleague, Vice President McKenna. But I look forward to discussing it more in Legislative Affairs.
Late motion presented by Counselor Powers that the may request the city solicitor to provide the city council with an update on the litigation between the owners of the Wonderland property and the city of Revere relative to the parking lot use.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually would like the city solicitor to come up here and inform the residents of the city of Revere what is going on at Wonderland with the parking. I know what's going on. And to try to convey this to some people, I don't think they really get it. This matter is in court right now, Suffolk Superior Court. The parking was denied by the city council, it was denied by the zoning officer of the city of Revere, and it was referred then to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that was denied. They upheld the zoning officer's position. And it wound up in Superior Court. But I think people need to hear that, because I get calls all the time, and people say, "How come they're parking down at Wonderland?" They're not supposed to be. But they're covered now because they've appealed that to Superior Court. It's my hope that when this does get heard in Superior Court, that they also will uphold the decision of the city of Revere, that they, their special permit has expired as of July 2015. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Anybody else on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Late communication from Site Plan Review relative to the findings and conditions for the Suffolk Downs PUD.
This will go to zoning with the public hearing earlier?
And late communication from the chief addressing Council Order Number 18-369.
This will be placed on file. There's no further business. This city council is adjourned until Monday, November 26. There are several things happening between now and then. Again, keep your eye out for a zoning subcommittee that we're planning on scheduling in the interim. Also, I want to remind everyone that tomorrow is the state election. I encourage everybody to go out and vote. I also encourage you to educate yourself on the ballot questions, as there are many this election. So take the time to read up on it a little bit and get all the information that you need before going to the polls. It's always helpful, because there are a lot of questions on the ballot this time around. So voting day tomorrow, polls are open, please get out. And I'm also going to have Counselor Novasowski make an announcement for Veterans Day.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, as everybody knows, this is the time of the year that we honor our veterans that, who have gone through many wars. And the city of Revere Veterans Day ceremony and dinner dance. And this year, our theme is remembering World War I, the anniversary of the end of World War I. And the event is Sunday, November 11, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. at the Beauchamp VFW on Bennington Street. The DJ for the evening is Alan Labella, and there'll be a special appearance by the singing state trooper, retired Sergeant Dan Clark. And there will be an Italian buffet, and that'll be provided by Domino's. So the fee is $15, and we encourage everybody to attend and honor our veterans. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I also want to take a moment to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, as that holiday will be passing in the interim, and also wish Revere High School's football team good luck in beating Winthrop at the Thanksgiving game. I see more hands up. Counselor Keith, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a reminder, not that it's my ward, but the Pointe Pines Fire Station is not open, so there will not be voting in that location. It'll be at the Pointe Pines Yacht Club. Thank you.
Great point, and thank you. And all polling locations remain available, and if you have any questions, feel free to call City Hall, and they'll be more than happy to point you in the right direction. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.